First things first, I would like, I would entertain a motion to add something to our executive session. Currently, we, on the posted agenda, we have an executive session for the professional contracts. Also like a conversation to allow for specifically the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee provided that the body not make any official action until we're in the open session. There was something that came up that was addressed by your board chair that I just want to make sure the rest of the, of the board is aware of, so we should tack that on at the end for executive session. So first things first, if I could have a motion to amend the agenda in that way, please.
Thanks, Glenn. Can I have a second on that?
Thank you, Cindy. So we have first and a second, and I appreciate that because I'm going to ask you to amend this same because I have it. I also have an issue that involves that same situation. Reasoning for going into it. Okay, it's a different issue than what I'm talking about?
I think so.
Okay, okay, great. For the mayor. So we have a first and a second. For the people who are brand new to the board, here's what we're doing. There are, for most of the business that a public board needs to undertake, Cindy knows, it's all I can take. Most of the business that a public board needs to undertake, we need to do it all in the open. It's all transparent as it should be, so people can come in person, they can contact that CD, they can know what we're doing. There are certain things that is, certain things provided for in statute where we can do have our conversations behind closed doors. Typically, those are limited to the board itself, but the board does have the prerogative to invite other people in for those discussions. Very often, we'll invite the superintendent, maybe not always, but very often we'll invite it. One of those provision, one of those things we can discuss in private are contracts. The other one we can discuss in private is when we have to evaluate or potentially discipline an employee. So that's what I'm asking we add. It's, we already have a provision for speaking about contracts. We need to talk about that other matter as well. So we have our first, we have our second. Any further discussion on what it is that I'm asking for? Okay, all those in favor of amending the agenda as described, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thanks very much. I'm also, I would also like to amend the agenda to put the chair report second, please. Could I have a motion for that? Thanks, Cindy. Could I have a second for that? Thanks, Jeff. Any discussion about amending the agenda in that matter? Hearing none. All those in favor of amending the agenda in that matter, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Thank you. Which brings us to our first agenda item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would like, I would invite you to stand. If you'd like. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Great, thank you. So that brings us to agenda item two, which is now the chair's reports. The reason why I wanted to bump it up is because we have two brand new faces and one kind of new face around the table. So for those of you who may not be aware, after town meeting day, the various elections held in our, in our constituent towns, we have three vacancies to this board. We now have those vacancies filled by folks who were willing to step forth and fill that, fill that void for at least a year's term. So we have, so I'll, I'll, we'll ask you three to introduce yourselves and we'll start with Stephanie, please.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Sonecal. I'm Woodford, so I'm new to this. I don't know what else to go and share.
That's perfect. Thank you very much for coming. Ricardo Wilson, Shastberry, North Huntington, Westons, and... Thank you and welcome. Hi, Cindy.
Cindy Brownell, 23 years on the school board, decided to come back.
It must be great. Thank you. Well, thank you both. Thank you all, all three of you for coming back. The chair report, I'll also just briefly mention that we do have committee assignments to make, which we will do. And we will, we will table, at least for another month, our election for representatives to the supervisory union board. We'll let folks get their feet wet with this meeting and then we'll come around next month. And if folks want to put their hat in the ring to be the representative to the supervisory union board from this board, we can do that at that point. What about this month's? This, so we, we have our, our pro tem reps and we'll keep those in place. So that's it for the chair's report. We'll move right on. Number two, public, or number three, rather now, public comments. Superintendent Culkin, do we have anyone in our weaving room?
There is one member of the public here, but I don't know if they want to say anything.
If the member of the public who's participating online would like to say something, please hit the hands up button or, or unboot yourself. Unboot yourself, perhaps. Okay, we're going to move through that. So that brings us to the consent agenda. So for Stephanie and Ricardo in particular, the consent agenda is the second page of your agenda. Those are the, there are the items that we, we need to address, these items generally just about every month, so they fall under the consent agenda. It's not a thing we need to say individual action on. You can simply ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as published. And typically, there's, there's not much issue with that. First question I'll ask, are there any proposed corrections or amendments made to either the sets of minutes that were attached to the agenda?
I mean, it's all the minutes, they weren't here, so you have to stay in for them.
I'm sorry, Jeff?
The new people have to stay in for the minutes.
They don't, they can, they can vote. Yeah, yeah, they absolutely can, yeah. Okay, so the, the consent agenda here is comprised of two sets of minutes. Those are just the, the records of our meetings that we've held in the last month. No warrants, no leaves of absence, no retirements or nomination for field trips, but we do have four resignations. Those letters are contained in the agenda. So I would first entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published, please. Thanks, Glenn. Could I have a second, please? Thanks, Cindy. Any discussion about the pieces within the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as published, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And what we just did is we just approved the minutes, that we approved the official record for those last few meetings. And not that we can stop someone from resigning or taking another employment, but it's nice that we acknowledge their, their license of resignation. But that's what we just did with our approval of the consent agenda. That brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the teachers' contracts. And we'll, we'll meld this piece of action in with the next agenda item, which is the approval of the support staff contract. And we'll turn to...
Director Gault.
Okay, Director Gault, do you need to take us through that, please?
Teacher.
New members, this is Nick Gault. He's the Director of Human Resources for the SVU. Part of both teachers and support staff negotiations.
As we've done in prior years.
Hello, how are you?
Prior years. Board members. We provide an overview to try to simplify. It captures all the language changes as well as gives you an overview of the terms of the contract and the salary schedule. So first things first, as you can see, two-year contract, so negotiated for this coming school year and then the 25, 26 year. The salary grid, which is attached, two-sided, you'll see first next year, followed by the 2025 year. And what you'll see represented here is the 9% increase plus step in each of those next two years. Nothing fancy. We didn't do anything. We didn't trim steps or consolidate anything. It's just a straightforward increase plus step. Safety language, and I use that term loosely, but essentially 8.14 was a conversation around a couple of things. The first being continuation of the safety committee that had been meeting that was a condition of the last contract. The request was, the approved language was that that would continue to meet and then bring its findings and any recommendations essentially to the board each year. So that's something that will continue. I summarized, and Chris, I don't know if you want to address any of this, modifications and additions regarding providing information, notification, and response to concerns about safety. So after months of negotiation and conversation around safety language, we made some modifications to that section 8.14. I do have the actual language. I don't know if, if that's something we want to hand out. It's really...
I think if any board members are interested, they can ask Director Gault and Nick. I think it's fine if you share that. It's all done in public.
Yeah, I can pass around the, the actual language itself. I just, there's a lot of nuances to it. I don't know how.
This would be a good pause to mention that your board chair was also instrumental in negotiations functioning as the chair negotiator. Sent back to Stephanie Mulligan from the MAU.
Which are giving, these are all tentative agreements, meaning this is every language change that went into the contract. So if you're interested in, you know, going through that. The next change there, 10.5, was modifications to the sick leave bank. So you may be aware that the teachers essentially contribute a day to the sick leave bank each year or as needed. And that time is available to be distributed to teachers who need it via a committee. We changed some of the procedures in that. Mainly, we brought the procedures under the collective bargaining process previously. It had been done through administrative regs, was sort of gray as to how to change them, how to update them. This way, it's nice and clean and it's not just part of the contract, which is good. And as you'll note there, part of this was the introduction of what is now a 10 days of paid maternity, paternity, eternal leave to qualify employees. So essentially, if you qualify under FMLA, then you can have those 10 days. Okay, so they don't have, they can use their sick time, personal time, but this is 10 days that they'll get from the district. 11.6 is pretty straightforward, just rolling over unused personal days as sick days with the intent that hopefully it will reduce some of the personal day usage that is necessary if they know that there's a rollover into sick days in the future. And then 29.26 through 29.32 is all references to class coverage, lost prep, and extra hours compensation. So if you look through the language, you'll see that those rates are set every year and those were increased for the first time in a couple of years to reflect that, that, you know, teacher pay rates have, have essentially increased as well. So when a teacher covers for a colleague or takes on extra work outside of the contract, their contracted day, there are compensation rates associated with those. So we, we inch those up as well. And then there are changes. I didn't detail them all here because they're Southwest Tech specific. Yes, we have a shared contract, but they're very specific to nuanced stuff within Southwest Tech. It doesn't affect our elementary teachers, so I didn't feel it's pertinent to go into that again.
New members, Southwest Tech, you know, they're an independent, separate school district. They share teacher and support staff contract with us because historically, at one point, they were a part of the SU. Broke away, I think in the late 90s, and remained part of the teachers' contract. A little unusual, but...
So happy to provide that language to anyone who cares to read through it. We have a mocked up version of this contract with changes that you can see, all the changes here, as well as a final version with all the changes kind of built in. And so I'd like to distribute that. They are, they are doing their ratification vote now, but like as we see.
On going.
Yeah, an ongoing kind of process, so we hope to hear back from them soon. We're hoping to hear, actually.
I'll go to the MAU board on the 22nd and the SU board that Wednesday, which would be Monday, the 26th, so the 24th. Ratified and approved. They ratify it, we approve it.
So the, I'm personally happy about the, the bump in pay and the salary schedule that we're able to predict, so. It, it's pretty common knowledge that you don't have to go too far into Massachusetts or into New York to find more competitive grades for teachers and for staff. So I'm glad that we're able to bring that up. You know, it amounts to just under a 20% raise all hold over the course of two years, which is great. Wasn't the budget. And it wasn't, yeah, it was, it was covered for the budget. The bits about safety language, there was a lot of, there was a lot of attention paid by the, by the teachers association. Framing sort of the, the worst experiences of the last few years maybe as the norm. And one thing that, that our boards did during those negotiations, in particular, all the stuff that we've undertaken in the last year, in the last 18 months, almost, all that, all the positions that we've funded, all of the new interventions that we tried, all the new ways of keeping track of the data to understand what's working. All of those things, I think, have had, at least anecdotally, have had a very positive effect in our schools with regard to both staff and student safety. Always room to, to grow on that. And in fact, one of the things that this board will be doing on a regular basis is, was what I'd like to be doing, is just hearing about in executive session when instances do come up in our elementary schools, that this board has a greater, has a better understanding of sort of up-to-the-minute instances in schools. My, my suspicion is that they're going to be dropping and dropping and dropping because of the very good things that this board has been able to advocate for with regard to budgeting that our principals and staff have been able to put into place in those schools. So I'm really happy about that, actually. And the rest of the stuff is just sort of the, in my view, the administrative negotiation things that need to take place when you do these sorts of things. So I would, I would certainly advocate that this board approve both of these contracts, the changes that we were able to come to during negotiations. So I'll ask for the motion first and then we'll open it up for any further questions. I would entertain a motion to both approve the teachers. Can we, Director Gault, can we do the teachers and the support staff contract?
Yeah, I can do a very, the ESP one will actually be quick because the language that you're looking at is, is, applies to both contracts. Meaning the safety language, the sick bank modification, those are universal across the two contracts. The only, and wage increase, 9% plus step in both years, also the same like the contract two years, also the same. The only thing specific to the support staff contract that isn't in the teacher contract is just an alignment of the agreement structure to be the same as the teacher contract. Otherwise, language proposed, new language is the same across both. So there's nothing to add to that part.
Any questions specifically on those changes that were just handed out?
They're still paid by hour. It's sort of that 180, whatever.
Depending on the position. It does include, give somebody a year-round position. And I should add, I thought there was one other, one other additional piece to the support staff is this was a longstanding conversation by that computer to the incorporation of, by their, at their choice, the previously non-union custodial maintenance positions within the SVU ESP. Just incorporated that into the contract. Thanks. So ongoing discussions.
Great. I would entertain a motion to approve both of these direct changes as presented this evening, please. Thanks, Cindy. So any further discussion on either of the proposed contracts? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving both these contracts, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Carries. Great, thank you very much. So that brings us to operations. And so we'll turn to Director Anderson for...
We don't want you driving by Benning Elementary School and seeing that it's covered in color. New members, this is Director Polly Anderson. She's the SKSU Director of Facilities and Operations, or is it Operations?
Go either way.
Sandy. Yeah, that we did not have, that we, historically, we took Director Renee Gordon's finance position and split it to two. It was pretty overwhelming, particularly with the addition of Arlington and more school building. The Director of Finance also oversee facilities. That's what this, I saw the wonderment in your, in your...
So I'm in charge of buildings, like the day-to-day operations, instructions, any capital improvements. And I also oversee transportation and food service, which are not my value, but construction is. So I'm very happy to show you these pictures. We have some renderings a couple of board meetings ago. I had other renderings with painting the brick, which at some point got painted. It was exposed when it was opened, but we had renderings of blue, green, and yellow. Yellow seemed to be the consensus, so we had some renderings together just to get a sense of the different, the different colors of yellow. And also taking out the cammily brick sections, the little, the concrete sections that project over doors and windows. And...
Did you call that eyeliner to me today?
I did. It outlines, like, yeah, it outlines it, so it just makes those sections pop. So I wanted to let you know that we're going to be painting the, it's a similar yellow to the yellow on the playgrounds that we just recently installed. And so I wanted to see if you have any questions, concerns, comments.
Which of the colors of these three are you choosing? Circle, June day, or...
There's, there, if there's any that make, that you have strong opinions about, we'd like to hear them. They're just three different colors that look good with the existing brick and also the brickwork that we're doing on the elevator.
So do you have a preference?
I don't. I don't.
Question. Were the students full?
Students were not full, but we did the original renderings we took to Benell. Do you want to talk about?
Yeah, well, those students were pulled, however, staff did look at the, we had some swatch, you know, colors up in the, in the back of the building. And there was a couple of colors that were preferred and, and this is one of them, the yellow, well, not one of them, because there's three of them here, right? But yellow being one of them.
Yeah, if you drive by on School Street and look.
Rear of the building.
East, you can see all the samples, so you can see the, the mockups. Yeah.
So I am happy to defer to Dr. Arroyo and Director Anderson's decision on this.
Yeah.
Unless we feel strongly that we should be, that the board should be weighing in on... I would fully trust the two of you and, and I've got stage with the rest of them.
I think it's an excellent suggestion.
I think it would, I don't want...
Even smaller, trying to get me... Trying to get me to do that.
No, I, I think that especially, one of the things that's misleading about the renderings is you see all these dark lines. And you won't see that when it's actually painted, so it'll be more monolithic.
I just want to, what is this on the...
That's the new elevator shaft, so you take this new pink color. This, um, this is the new elevator shaft, personally, with the R-Busser phones. We are scheduled, we did some construction work to stop for the winter. We're starting again, hopefully, on April 22nd. So this will serve the two-story portion of the building. And this is the mechanical room. And on the, the south face of the elevation, the height and width are the perfect dimensions for the golden ratio, the Fibonacci code. So part of the construction is to place that in the brick. It's an educational piece. We're also, as Dr. Williams, we're, we're working on air quality improvements. And so that work is ongoing and should be done by September.
We did have another roof leak.
We did have another roof leak. So, and I wish I had a picture, but we had one of the brand-new units to provide tempered air to the building. There was a really robust windstorm, what, four nights ago? Between the earthquake and the eclipse, I guess. But one of the units fell over and so it pulled the conduit out of the roof. And so we experienced a roof leak, which was really Friday morning. I got my steps in by shoveling the roof. But we got the roof leak taken care of and we're keep moving forward.
If there's no other questions for Dr. Anderson, I'm going to let her go because she needs to make a parents' meeting for a field trip.
Yeah, my daughter at preschool.
Thank you, Director. Thanks for all your work that's brought up. Thanks so much. Superintendent Culkin, I am noting that there was action requested about the exterior. This board is not going to take action. Okay. So that brings us to finance. So the treasury report was, was included in the, in the packet. There's also the element, the matter of the elementary book donation. And so for the, for the new members of the board, whenever someone or an organization wants to make a donation, we need to formally accept that donation. I don't think I've ever seen a donation that we've sent out to, but, you know, maybe that day will come at some point. So I'm offline, so I'm just pulling up the... Somebody has it in front of them. Thanks. Do you have the actual letter, Jeff, Superintendent Culkin? I don't know that I'm seeing it in the packet. It's in the packet I'm overlooking. So it's an elementary book donation. I'm certain we can produce at least what that looks like in part. So I would entertain a motion to accept the elementary book donation, please. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Cindy. So we have a first and a second to accept the elementary book donation. Any further discussion on that?
Books.
That's a fine question. An invested citizen is donating books to...
Right, right.
To one or more of our elementary students.
Thank you, no.
Yes. We'll get that information in thoroughly. Okay. It's a dutiful board clerk. Jeff is our board clerk, by the way. Thanks for keeping an eye out on that, Jeff. So great, so we have the first and second. All in favor of accepting the donation, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. And Superintendent Culkin, if you could get that letter to Jeff, please.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so this brings us to our policies. Now, I'm seeing two policies on here, the first two, A and B, that are up for adoption. So again, for the new board members. Policies are generated by a, by a supervisory union committee that is comprised of representatives from each of the individual boards. Policies are propagated within that committee. That committee then goes back to their, their individual constituent boards. First formal warning, which is just a formal way of saying, hey, this is what we're considering, we're going to be voting on this soon. Then it comes around for adoption. The adoption phase is the formal adoption of those policies. And a policy goes into effect for the supervisory union once each of the constituent boards has approved that draft policy. Few months ago, we were, we warned the dress code policy and the concussion management policy. And there was some debate within this board about whether or not there should be greater specificity within the policy itself or if the, if the thrust of the policy could be covered in the administrative regs, which is how most of the policies are managed anyway. So the rest of the supervisory union is waiting for this board to take final action on these policies. And I would entertain a motion first to adopt draft policies 5080 and 5120, please.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Cindy. Great, so we have a first and a second. Any further conversation? Let me phrase it this way, any new conversation about these two draft policies?
I mean, I just, we're reading, you know, just the license to Title 26 in the state of Vermont. It's a pretty large swath of individuals.
Okay.
I myself one of them. Um, so let me clarify, I can clear anybody for concussion.
Okay.
You know, so my concussion appeal, I consider on the top, but I think is a, if a person is ridiculous, but I think you should be probably look at, you know, doctor or at least the athletic. Maybe to just narrow it down. The Title 26 is, you know, 25 plus.
Okay, so there, so the motion on the floor is to approve them as they're written. There's, there's a, I'm not going to call it an objection, Jeff, and a, and an observation of perhaps how it could be improved somewhere down the line. But any further new conversation about either of these policies? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting these two policies as written, please signify by saying aye. Aye. He whispered it, but I heard her say it. Any opposed? Any abstentions? These motions carry. Thank you very much. What I'll be passing along as well for our new board members, this is the, the warrant that allows us to pay our bills for the month. And a majority of the board members need to sign this. So Stephanie and Ricardo, that's going to make its way around and just, I didn't, fix your signature when you're going to get some, please. All right, that brings us to, we're going to warn Policy 6100. Again, this is simply a matter of us formally, formally taking it, formally taking it under consideration. So I would entertain a motion to warn draft policy 6100, please. Thanks, Cindy. Do you have a second, please? Thanks, Glenn. Any discussion on warning draft policy 6100? Hearing none. All those in favor of, of warning 6100, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That is warned. We also have proposed changes made to Policy 4001. We are warning the modifications to that policy, not to remove it entirely, simply to replace it with a, with a modified version. So I would entertain a motion to warn 4001, please. Thanks, Cindy. Do you have a second, please? Thanks, Michelle. First and a second. Any discussion about warning 4001? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? And that case, please. Abstention from Ricardo, thank you.
I'm just...
Yeah, okay, that's, that's, I appreciate that. And lastly, there is a, there is a, a movement from the policy committee to remove Policy 4003. Much of what is currently contained in 4003 is formed in the draft version of 4001, which we just warned. So I would entertain a motion to remove Policy 4003, please, as recommended by the policy committee. Thanks, Glenn. And we'll call it Sandy's second. That's a first and a second. That's a first and a second. Any discussion about that?
I have a question, why are they removing?
They are, they're revamping four zero zero one to pull in most of four zero zero three, but to make it even better. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those, all those uh, in favor of removing four zero zero three, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any sessions? And it carries. Thank you very much. Okay. We just buzzed through a bunch of important, but. Not as important in my view, not as important administrative stuff, because we have principals and a superintendent to hear from. And so Superintendent Colkeen.
Well, you notice, it is a little different, I tell you, you see all your principals here. Thank you, Cindy, because it's that time of year for them to report out on their continuous improvement plan. That is going to be led by the. For those who don't know her, Assistant Superintendent Director Laura Boudreaux. Let me share. All participants could share.
Oh, you did. And then, yeah, since you're sitting there.
Yes. Okay. Please, I don't wanna be that standard.
Okay. So um, thanks for having us tonight. And this is uh, the presentation we're giving tonight. Is something we wouldn't give in advance because part of the state requirement is that we're presenting it to you tonight. But after this presentation, if you would like us to come back, please reach out to the chair, to the superintendent. We also have a hard copy for those of you that are in the room tonight. So let me tell you the story. So uh, we made it through the pandemic and uh, the state put a pause on the continuous improvement plan process. And has slowly started to um, reengage all the districts in the state. Because we should be making decisions based on the goals that we set. And so we have spent the last year. Uh, as a leadership team, working together to update not only the district's continuous improvement plan goals. And then all of the schools as well, the second half of the year. Uh, so I wanna start by just sharing the timeline with you. Um, and for the community as well. Uh, so we started this process in the fall between September and November. And uh, the state asked us to go back and ask the district and the schools to review their um, vision statements as well. Uh, and we were also, resources were shared by the Agency of Education so that we made sure that everybody had access to to those as well. Through September and December, um, that's one data review. So we presented data to all the boards, academic and social emotional, um, in the fall. We also had title meetings, had all of the buildings where we also um, engaged the community in conversation around data and collected ideas. We are in year two of having a community collaboration data night where we just open our door and all are welcome. And we have stations, we actually use this facility this time of year, come in and talk to us. And we just had um, staff available to answer questions, to look at data. Um, to share ideas. And then we also used our newsletters as another format to also share um, our thought process and to solicit feedback. And then um, once uh, the district and schools convene teams as well to update goals. This winter, um, again, we reviewed what's a really good SMART goal. Um, the state of Vermont, again, I just wanna point this out, they have representatives that are attached toward district and they're meeting with us along the way. And they're monitoring our process. Um, and they gave us lots of great feedback. We actually got a lot of uh, positive feedback from the state of Vermont about our process. Um, and um, they provided some feedback for us to make changes around um, uh, really taking a deeper dive into root cause analysis, which we really hadn't done before. So um, those pieces have been helpful. And then the big day on there is uh, March twenty-seventh. Because on March twenty-seventh, uh, the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Uh, and myself presented all of the continuous improvement plans to the Agency of Education. Um, and when they, we, it was a long afternoon and we went through them one by one. Um, and they again provided another level of feedback, which brings us to tonight, which is the next step in the required part of the process. That we come and prevent, present them publicly to the board and to anybody that's that's watching um, to provide you with, this is, this is what we're gonna be focusing on for the next three years. Uh, and then there is a grant management system. And all of these have to go into the grant management system in the next month so that we can apply for all of our grant funding. So this is a requirement for all of our funding. So we're actually on a, we're good. I'm very proud of our district, I'm proud of our schools, proud of our principals. Um, it was, it was uh, an all-hands-on-deck project. Um, the next step again is um, principals right now, because we have big three-year goals. All of our schools are title schools, they're school-wide schools, so they will have an annual goal based on their three-year goal. So you will continuously, over the next three years, receive data to review in the fall, to academics and social emotional learning. Linked to those year-long goals that lead to these big overarching goals. And then I hope during budget season. Thinking way ahead. Renee's not hearing us talk about this right now. This, these are the things we wanna be thinking about as we think about the investments we would like to make. So with that in mind, that's the big process piece. And so we'll take questions at the, if you have any questions at the end, but this is a great opportunity, especially because we have new board members. We're going to just quickly, each principal's gonna take a turn and just share their goals. We're gonna open them up in the air here. I hope the principals, because we have new board members, just also say what school you represent.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah, introduce yourself and the school that you represent. Um, I know we have two online. Um, so Jeff is first.
Bennyton Elementary.
Okay.
Bennyton Elementary School, hello everyone, Dr. Richard Royal, building principal at Bennyton Elementary School. So, you know, when we talked about what we wanted to really address, we know we need ELA assistance, we know we need math assistance, and we need to grow in those points. But we felt as a school that a safe and healthy school is the first way to achieve those. So our first goal, safe and is a safe and healthy school, excuse me. And uh, by June twenty twenty-seven, at least eighty percent of Bennyton Elementary students will acquire and apply to knowledge, skills, and attitudes to develop healthy identities. So, Mr. Joe, should I read the whole thing? I mean, I feel like I'm so full when I read it, when it's. Let me make sure.
Yeah.
Excellent. So then our second goal, equally as important, but again, in our trajectory, we felt as though safe and healthy schools were initial. Academic achievement, we're hoping, uh, working towards, not hoping, because hope is not a plan. We are working to achieve eighty percent of Bennyton Elementary students in our grades will demonstrate growth in the foundation skills. And as measured by our MAP scores and our um, our our overall success at our school. And then finally, again, on our second page here, is our academic achievement in math. And we again are hoping for that, or pardon me, are working towards our eighty percent of uh, our students will demonstrate the growth needed in the foundation skills of mathematics. So, once again, safe and healthy schools, ELA and mathematics.
All right, mine start.
Hi, I'm Terry Hillary, principal at Molly Stark. Uh, I'm really proud of my leadership team. I stopped you too. Of course, the new board members, both Dr. Royal and Terry are first-year principals for the Union Elementary District, so. And um, and they're doing a great job. Thank you. I'm really proud of the leadership team at Molly Stark. We.
I'll interrupt you. Not to say that the principals. Saw Beth's face. I think she's doing her job, Jeff. I will not interrupt you again. Put it better than you better, I'm sorry.
I'm really proud of the leadership team at Molly Stark Elementary School. We worked uh, all through the winter and uh, this new year, the new county year, come up with our goals. Um, the first one is safe and health, safe and healthy schools. By June twenty twenty-seven, Molly Stark Elementary School will have a high fidelity rate, seventy percent or higher. Of universal implementation efforts as evidenced through treatment integrity, social validity survey. And at least sixty percent of students will be responding successfully, which will be low risk to primary prevention efforts as evidenced by the S R S S I E and behavioral data. Uh, with focus on internalizing behaviors. Then we slip, we skip to our academic achievement goals uh, for ELA. By June twenty twenty-seven, sixty percent of Molly Stark's fifth-grade students will meet or exceed the reading standards linked to the S V S U. Reading curriculum demonstrated by spring twenty twenty-seven N W E A MAPS uh, red score of sixty percent using achievement status and growth summary quadrant chart. And by June twenty twenty-seven, fifty-five percent of Molly Stark Elementary School's exiting third-grade students will be proficient in ELA foundational skills. And our last goal is in math. Uh, by June twenty twenty-seven, sixty percent of Molly Stark Elementary School's fifth-grade students will meet or exceed the math standards linked to the S V S U math curriculum and demonstrated by spring twenty twenty-seven N W A. MAPS red score of sixty percent using achievement status and growth summary quadrant chart.
Thank you. And Donna, calling, uh, are you joining us? You're you're up.
I am here. Thank you so much for letting me join virtually. I am uh, tag teaming with my parent group tonight, Aim, who is in the building and are being so kind to uh, wait for me. And actually, um, what's really great is because I get to include them as one of my stakeholders. And have an opportunity to share our goals and our continuous improvement plan, as well as the process in reaching our goals um, within this evening. So we've done that, and I'm also proud to say that we've also done it with our fourth and fifth graders, because we asked for their input also. That was really interesting. So you can see our goals, starting out with the safe and healthy. I think the most important thing to really identify also, or to be aware of as a board, is the process in getting to these goals. Reaching what our goals are going to be and hope to reach by twenty twenty-seven. And that was through the data review process. So I don't want to read for you, but I think that data review process was incredibly powerful for our entire community. To see what we've done with children, where we want to go, and what we want that um, goal to be. Um, and they are in three areas, safe and healthy. And if you wanna go to the next slide. And then in academic achievement in ELA, and the following one is in math. They are similar to our sister schools, so I appreciate um, the um, summary that my uh, principal colleagues have shared. And if you have any questions about our goals, in particular for Monument, I'd be more than happy to have a conversation.
Thank you, Donna. And Don, thanks for um, putting in the data review process, um, which is where most of our time is. So it was really nice that you were able to highlight and share what that looked like in the context of your setting, because that's was the expectation across our district, was the time put into analyzing data. So, Powell.
Uh, for our first goal, uh, sorry, I'm Beth George, I'm the principal of Powell Elementary. Uh, for our first goal, we're safe and healthy. By twenty twenty-seven, uh, as a committee, we really talked a lot about uh, external and internal behaviors. And we noticed at Powell, uh, quite an increase in our internal behaviors as we measure on the S R S S I E. So uh, focusing that by twenty twenty-seven, we would see a decrease in the externalizing high-risk behaviors. And as measured by the fall to spring S R S S I E. And then also that we would see a measure by spring of twenty twenty-seven, that we would be uh, below five percent for externalizing high-risk behaviors. And less than ten percent of students with internal behaviors. Uh, moving on to ELA, that by twenty twenty-seven, we would, we would have eighty percent of students in grades three through six. Who would meet projected growth rates uh, using MAPS scores from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Uh, really focusing on our interventions at the early grade levels, uh, K through three in these upcoming years. So that as they enter three through six, they're achieving eighty percent or better. Um, and then by June twenty twenty twenty-seven, Powell Elementary will close the gap in performance between historically marginalized and historically privileged students as measured by the rating of need. On the Vermont Agency of Education's annual snapshot. And then for math, uh, by June twenty twenty-seven, sixty percent of our students in grades five will be achieving at or above grade level growth according to our MAP testing. Which would be a yearly increase from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven of eight percent each year in achievement. Uh, by June twenty twenty-seven, fifty percent of the students will move from some risk to low risk in sequencing for kindergarten through first grade. And by June twenty twenty-seven, Powell Elementary will close the gap in performance between historically marginalized and historically privileged students as measured by a rating of need on the Agency of Education's annual snapshot.
And Jeff.
Uh, my name is Jeff Johnson, the principal of Shastberry Elementary. And I've done this more than once. Um, I have to say, this is the most collaborative process since we started doing this. Um, before I talk about our goals, I wanna thank your office, particularly Melissa and Laura. Um, they met with us as a group once a month at least, and we're constantly on the phone with them throughout this process. If they need any help at all, we could call one of those two and they say, this is where we need you to be, or we need to do. Um, as well as the liaison between the state and our plans. So they were key. I also wanna thank my school leadership team and all of my school committee team members, which is basically every staff member, including arrows, who had input on this. Um, this, like I said, I've done this a number of times, and it's the most collaborative process we've had so far. And I think our work kinda shows for it, our folks kinda show for it. Donna's correct, we did a lot of data analysis for all of these different goals. And you'll see, I'm not gonna, again, I'm not gonna read these to you, you all can read, but they're pretty similar to what we all kinda came up with. We're all focusing on intrinsic, extrinsic behaviors and getting a decrease of um, high-risk students to that and more lower students in those areas. Uh, we have seventy percent and seventy-five percent in those two areas for Shastberry. Academic, we chose, and a lot of schools did this as well, we chose to look at the progress of a student. So we wanna see them making their progress from from benchmark to benchmark to benchmark. And I'll keep them to proficiency eventually, but the progress that they're um, meant to meet each benchmarking is what we're gonna be looking for. Um, we're gonna monitor from now until the three years. Not, this isn't gonna go away after today. And we pick it up in two thousand twenty-seven, say, okay, how we're doing. Every year, we're gonna be monitoring this to see how we're doing. Um, so we're looking for sixty percent of our students in grades three through six for ELA, for MAPS, meeting those projected growths. Um, we also have some sub-goals there, some lower-level areas uh, that we like to, we like to track as well. That's for ELA. For math, um, again, sixty percent of our students in grades three through six or projected growth in mathematics. Again, measured by MAP is something we do three times a year, every year, so it's pretty consistent, and we know what those numbers mean. And we have, like every other school, we have a number of steps, steps around all these goals, what we're gonna do.
And finally, Woodford. Um, who's here?
Megan is here.
Yes, Megan.
Hi, everybody. Um, thank you again. Yeah, thank you too, like Donna said, for letting me join remotely. I'm Megan Meskett. I am uh, the principal, I guess, of record at Woodford Elementary School. I've actually only been doing this since January. So um, this has been a great process for me to go through in getting to know um, everyone at the school and uh, how they function. I'm also the district director of early childhood education. That's my real job. No, this is, but this has been really wonderful. Um, so we also have very similar um, goals um, in the safe and healthy area, focusing on those um, internalizing behaviors, which are more. For just clarification, are those behaviors that we see in children that can be disruptive to their learning, but aren't often always disruptive to the classroom? Um, so really making sure that children have um, good self-esteem, feel comfortable in the classroom, can advocate for themselves, all of those wonderful things um, that they need to grow and learn. And uh, we also did choose to use growth measures for our ELA and our math polls. Um, primarily because the the team felt that this gave us the most. The the easiest to kind of understand snapshot of students, having such a small school and having mixed grade levels. There's a lot of individualization that already happens. Um, and this way, looking at individual student growth and collective student growth for um, for the whole cohort. Um, really fit with our framework and and how things work there.
Right, thank you, Megan. And finally, um, to wrap up. The goal is to monitor, and we needed to come to consensus about what that looked like across our district. And so we agree that three times a year that we will complete a screening process. And we do, as required by the state, have a comprehensive assessment table, which we all adhere to across the district. That lets us know what assessments we're gonna use to help measure the success of the goals that we've set. And it's all part of our multi-tiered system of support that focuses on academics, social, emotional, and behavioral learning. We also are fortunate to have uh, curriculum teams that identify curriculum-based measures. I think we recently identified, we have a hundred and forty teachers. teachers and staff that participate on curriculum teams to help develop the tools that we use as our local curriculum-based measures. And we also have a treatment integrity, social validity survey that is filled out by staff, all staff, that lets us know how we're doing, and that feedback goes directly back to the schools. And so just to close out, this was an opportunity for us to highlight the continuous improvement plan process that we spent a year developing, and tonight was our introduction of these goals to this board. I would turn this back over to the chair and superintendent, however you want to move forward if there's questions, and we can come back to at another time so people can digest.
That's our plan was. I understand there's a lot to hear tonight. So if you want to put this on a agenda item for a future meeting, if you have specific questions answered, happy to do that. And if there's something simple that could be answered right now, go right ahead. But we, if it might be, because we've heard feedback from the board before when we present this much information on one meeting, it's a lot to digest.
Well, and part of what I'd love for us to see this, the rest of this academic here is to get back to inviting individual principals to our board meetings, and those might be perfect times to ask. Because there was a principal scheduled for this evening, but I cut it out after.
We got all of those.
They're all going to be. So with that in mind, any general or simple questions that any member of the board has?
It's basically like just a funny question, but. You know, in terms of the, like, in terms of these numbers, maybe everyone else on the table is aware, like, in terms of where we were at before.
Great question.
Is that stuff that we can have access? Like, again, we don't need someone to come back to say that, but I would be curious.
Yeah, that's fine. So, Ricardo, in the process, on the process page, I listed the board meeting dates, and there's minutes to these board meetings where we presented data, and we don't, we now separate academic from social emotional, so we do it over the course of two meetings. And so that's where a lot of that data that was used to set the goals started. There is more diagnostic, smaller data that happens at the school level, but we can also, that's a great question. That's the data we use for the first half of the year. We'd be happy to share.
Just in a simple sense, like, as you're going through safe and healthy, you're looking at eighty percent from Bennington Elementary, like, kind of where were you?
Yes. Yes, so that would be helpful. Yeah. Okay, great. Yep. We can get that and share that back with the starting point we used.
Any questions right now?
Well, superintendent, I want to thank the assistant superintendent and the director of construction for all their hard work. As Principal Johnson mentioned, they really are the leaders of this, but the collaboration with the principals. I find it heartening to see a group that is working together, which, you know, isn't always been the case, you know. I see supportive colleagues of each other, which is a great thing for me to say. And I do have to say, you know, I did recently make the mistake of saying that Jeff was our most tenured principal. And I would be corrected that, but I just, I do want to say that experience and tenure is not indicative of age. And as someone who has, you know, been at this for forty-four years, you know, I'm a shining example of that, isn't the case. So. But Donna Colley is our most senior principal who has done this for many years, and then Jeff, but I, at a recent meeting, I referred to Jeff as the most tenured principal, and my apologies, Principal Colley.
It's quite all right. You always say experience to me, and I appreciate that reminder. And I actually would say, I just want to reiterate what Jeff said. This has been the most collaborative process in all the years that I've been involved in creating continuous improvement plans for the state of Vermont. So I have to say here, here to Laura and Melissa and all of my colleagues, because we did work together and it was really wonderful.
We challenge you, but like, the question is perfectly logical, you know, where's the starting point? Where are we at? So address that. Because that, if someone new to the board or even someone who's been on the board, it's like, you know, when you look at these percentages in isolation, what does that tell you? I'll go into the next part of my report if there. So, have you packed the calendar for next year? I'll just go over the process with you. I have to submit by April one a calendar to the state. A statute, it is the role of superintendent to develop the calendar. I have to develop a regional calendar with other superintendents. That's changed with the past few years when Arlington came into our RSU. So I used to meet with the Arlington superintendent and superintendent of Southwest Tech. I also meet, I belong to a bigger Southern Vermont superintendence group that includes Rutland and everything down. But Rutland and Manchester are not really part of our region for developing a calendar. The region old calendar is centered around the tech centers, all school districts that send to the same tech center. Rutland has their own tech center. And Manchester goes that way. They don't come to us. So what have been the challenges of the calendar, you probably have already heard, you know, one, the number of early release days that are in the calendar. Southwest Tech is expressed concern with that for their time and learning. I understand that they receive federal funds, Perkins funds, which are funds specifically for technical education. But there isn't our requirement that students are supposed to be engaged in in that learning for to qualify for Perkins funding, which I think is two hours per day. So if you're like in the automotive program, supposed to be in there two hours a day for that to qualify. Is it per day or is it cumulative over the week is available? I'm not an expert on that. The I do want to reiterate, I've read this before, as far as, if I was designing a calendar, I would have an early release day every week. Because of the importance of professional learning, the continuity of professional learning, the ability of time for team meetings, planning time. That's how much I value. I know that for families with childcare issues, it's controversial. And I know that, but there are school districts to do it, that do it and have done it for years. And also came up in negotiations this year from the teachers' association. They wanted to negotiate that there would be no early release days in the calendar at all. It is not the realm of negotiation by statute. It is a superintendent's. But I will address what we did in negotiations in a minute. But let me read here. So during the twenty twenty four school year, there will be designated early release Wednesdays for the SVSU students to allow for teacher preparation, team meetings, example, PLC meetings, educational support team meetings, five oh four meetings, IMP meetings, team meetings, and for professional learning. This calendar is a response to the continued shortage of substitute teachers. I don't think we have more than eight substitutes within the whole S U. So what we used to do for professional learning, we're at Central Office, we'd like bring all the fourth grade math teachers together for a professional learning day, and we'd put substitutes out in their schools. We no longer can do that because there are not enough substitutes, even for people who are out sick, never mind pulling out twenty math teachers for professional learning. So the continued shortage of substitute teachers, that's impacted teacher preparation, professional learning, and collaboration time. And the increased need to shift to evidence-based practices. These goals that you just saw in the continuous improvement plan, particularly along our math in ELA, require professional learning to achieve those goals. Our evidence-based program, the example, that would be our reading program that's considered an evidence-based. And there is a considerable amount of professional learning, particularly for, you know, wasn't necessarily taught when you were in college. And so, you know, tell me a profession that you would want to be part of that doesn't have continuous professional learning. If your doctor said, hey, I learned everything I needed in medical school, and I've been at the point where I've never gone back and taken any professional learning, you might want to look for a new doctor. So the same with our teachers. So, and we will continue to share opportunities on these Wednesday afternoons to support families in need of childcare. So the calendar for next year is set, because I told you, we had to send it in by April one. It doesn't require a school board vote, but we always share it with you. What happened in negotiations this year, I told you, the two things happened. The teachers' association spoke out against early release days. They didn't want them. They just want to I don't know what, full learning days happen. And then Southwest Tech also expressed that they didn't want early release days for the reason that I mentioned. It's impacting students from high school who go home, don't have a class on those Wednesdays. So we committed to form a committee once, so sometime after July one. It will meet, this is going to represent from the teachers' association, representatives from Southwest Tech, representatives from the SVSU, who will meet and consult with the superintendent to achieve a calendar that maybe we all can agree with. It will be challenging. You know, one of the things that proposed, I should say, this calendar has a hundred and eighty student days in it. Vermont statute requires a hundred and seventy-five. This SU has always gone five additional days. One of the proposals was to go to a hundred and seventy-five student days and use those five days for full-day professional learning scattered like throughout the calendar. It's a proposal with merit, but it also has its, you know, it has its challenges. Is the balance between professional learning worth less student contact time? But then someone said, well, how rigorous is education going on on a half early release day versus and versus only going a hundred and seventy-five days? And there are plenty of school districts in Vermont that only do a hundred and seventy-five days. In all honesty, I don't think we've done a hundred and eighty days in the past few years because what's typically happened, depending on how many snow days we have, and the students have to return, say, for Monday or Tuesday, go to the board and say, let's end school for students on Friday and use those for staff days. And maybe last year, maybe we had a hundred and seventy-eight days. So it wouldn't be a radical shift. But those are some of the things that we'll be discussing once this committee is formed to try to be more inclusive. It really didn't become a disputed issue until Arlington joined the supervisory meeting. Because of the ski days that they do every Wednesday, January, February, March, that's when we have universal calendar. Those became early release days throughout the SU. It's from a professional learning point of view, you heard what I, my opening comment was, I'm fine with that, that there's one in every, every week. I think there's solid educational reasons for why we do that. But I acknowledge that there are those that disagree with that. So hopefully we'll come to some type of a working calendar for next year. As your chairperson was there during those negotiations, I mean, this was, along with the safety, was a sticking point on getting it done. And the creating the committee was a compromise as opposed to being able to agree at something at the table that would have just, we wouldn't have had a summit if we did this tonight at all. So.
Jim, just one clarification. You said that Manchester people go north through Rutland. Don't they come to us for Southwest Tech?
Manchester?
Manchester, Dorson, all those are sending towns there, our Southwest Tech region. I remember. I think that's the.
I could be wrong, but I don't, I do, I consult with the superintendent of Manchester on the calendar, but they align more with.
You said there, you send their people north, that they come down here.
I could be wrong. I don't know. Yeah, I thought that they did not. I thought they went up to.
I know they have representatives from Manchester, Dorson, Ford, so.
No.
Southwest Tech?
No.
Okay. You could, I mean, I'll check.
I'll let you, something's changed since I left Southwest Tech.
When I read their thing, they take, you know, they say the Southwest Tech's located Vermont, East River High School students. And.
Yes, all of Bennington County, they can go there.
Dorset, Glass, Mary, Manchester, North Bennington, Powell, Greensboro, Sandgate. Seerford, Shastberry, Sunland, Twin Valley.
That's always in the case of Bennington, and all of Bennington County. But as far as representatives on their boards, I don't believe there's anybody from. They may, but they don't have any representatives on the board, unless they've changed since I was the superintendent there. Which it could, but they, the representatives were from, which is the towns of the MAU and. Yeah, it's not, I don't speak with any expertise on that. So I'll put that caution there.
Does this follow the new teacher contract? Is it the same number of days, a hundred and seventy-nine and a half? And then eight days for any service?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing changed that way.
What's the difference between early release and a half day?
Early release is the correct term.
So.
Other than the day before Thanksgiving.
Probably in the contract.
That is actually in the contract because a half day.
So if it's an early release.
It's a half day for the staff too. That's the only, I can't require them to stay that day.
If it's an early release, is that considered a full day for students or a half?
It counts as a full day for students. So if we did the math of, you know, drop to a hundred and seventy-five versus how many hours are lost in the half day on a hundred and seventy-five days? There might actually be more contact time, but that's what we'll study on that committee.
Well, it's, I couldn't get it to work, and I couldn't figure out why, but that certainly answers the question as to.
But I would say five full days is also not enough for how much work we need to do for professional learning. And then I also have, you know, I'll save it for the, I'll save my thoughts for that committee, but of what I think challenges will be with that model.
Any other questions about the school calendar?
I have a question. So on those Mondays, is the expectation, like, across the district that IEP meetings, five oh four meetings, any meetings that are here towards the students would be scheduled that day?
Much as possible. It's impossible to schedule them all for that day. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, well, we've already dispatched the chair report. We have FYIs, a few of them. So the budget status report was included. All the numbers are also included for Ricardo and Stephanie. Those are always interesting to keep an eye on, to see sort of where our numbers are, the number of kids in our buildings. The administrative regulations have been updated for passes to hundred and fifty-one eighty-five. Please take a look at those, just so we know what's up. Thank you, building principals, for coming around. It's great. It's always, it's, I don't know, it feels like there's a great vibe amongst the lot of you, and I'm happy to hear you saying that as well. So it shows, it shows. I think this is a really great prompt, and thank you very much for all of your work and doing this together. Thank you. That brings us to the last item on our, on our agenda, which is move to executive session. So again, for our new board members, we can't just do it. We need to move it, second it, and then approve that motion. So we're going to signify by our principals, and then we'll figure out the rest of this. Thank you. We will come out with a positive big action. Yes, yeah. So I would entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to one Vermont statute annotated subsection three thirteen A and three thirteen A three, please. Yeah, the first and the second, any further conversation? Okay. All those in favor of entering into executive session in that manner, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Any opposed? Absentions? Motion carries. We are going to invite our superintendent in and Director Gault as well. Please to exit executive session. Thanks. First and the second. Any discussion about exiting executive session? Hearing on all those in favor of exiting executive session, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes. We're now in open session again. I would entertain a motion, please, to increase the pay scale for non-union employees by nine percent, please, for a period of one year. Thanks. We'll call it first and the second. Any discussion about that? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. And finally, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Paul Chrisell the second, any discussion on that? Hearing on all those in favor of adjourning, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? I abstain. Abstentions go to the majority. But motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you.
About any of that stuff or something, I'm also happy to take that. So feel free to leave it out on the table.
Any of that stuff or something, I'm also happy to take that. So feel free to leave it out on the table if you don't mind.